Well, shall we call it to order? What do you think?
Eric, go ahead.
Go for it.
Megan?
All right. While Lisa's phone is still working, I'll ask her to call the attendance here, but officially, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Lisa?
Okay, okay. Joe?
Here.
John? John?
John's muted. He's here.
Okay. Greg?
Here.
Jim?
Yeah.
Alex?
Here.
Justin?
Here.
Jen?
Here.
I'm here. Mike?
Here.
Julie?
Here.
Peter?
Here.
And Mary?
Here.
Wow.
Okay, we're all here.
We're all here. All right, well, I'll ask at this point if any, if there's any member of the public that has a comment on an agenda item. I've got to scroll through four screens to see everybody, so. I don't see anyone. Okay, so we'll move on to the consent agendas. There anything, there's on that is the minutes of the October.
I have my hand raised. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry?
My name's Andrew Hoskins. I had my hand raised. I'm sorry to interrupt.
I'm sorry, I missed you. Go ahead.
No worries. My name is Andrew Hoskins. I'm a parent of three kids in the district. And just after last week's or last meeting's discussion and the vote on the REACH program, I just thought I would chime in because I thought was back on the agenda today at least for discussion. A lot of the members of the board last time were talking about, you know, they wish that they could hear from a parent, and I think that I can offer like a pretty unique perspective on, on the program. We have two twins, one of whom is back in the REACH program this year, made the lottery of small students who was able to re-attend. And one of whom, who was not selected for the lottery, so was not able to attend the program this year. And I just want to say that the difference has been sort of amazing. Thea, who's our daughter, who is in Mr. Wayman's class, has just continued to develop and, and grow her kindergarten readiness and has had a phenomenal year despite some of the challenges that Mrs. Bennett outlined last year. And Jackson, our son, has really sort of fallen behind a little bit, which is, you know, even despite my wife's best efforts, and she was a preschool teacher in New York before we moved here. So, you know, she knows a little bit about early education. I just also wanted to say, you know, on behalf of sort of the REACH families, I think that not having the program or having maybe sort of a watered down version of the program, like what I, what I think may be happening in January in terms of split classes and only having two hours per student and then another two hour wave. I, I think that there's an impact on families in the community where parents, you know, are unable to pursue work, even if it's just on a part-time basis. And I also think there's just an impact on the community. When we moved here back in 2018, one of the big reasons that we were drawn to Washington was because of the amazing REACH program. You know, the fact that our kids would be able to have two years of pre-kindergarten was something that was really in line with our values educationally, and we think really spoke to an amazing program. You know, Region 12 school system has here. And I think, you know, to ultimately not, not be able to have that has been sad, and I'm excited to hear what the plan is. And I, you know, for Mrs. Bennett, I know you're dealing with so much in terms of logistics, in terms of space and staffing and all that stuff. So I don't presume to know the answers. I just wanted to kind of give a full-throated endorsement of the program, even this year's version of the program, which has been very, very meaningful for our daughter. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hoskins. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else, any other member of the public who has comments they wish to make? All right, I see no one's hand up. If there is someone out there, please speak, otherwise we're going to move on. All right. On the consent agenda is, are the minutes of board meeting of October 26, 2020. I don't, if, if no one wishes to take those off of the consent agenda in order to amend them or, or reconsider them or something, they will be adopted, if, if not taken off. Does anyone wish to make a motion to take them off agenda? Consent agenda. All right. I see and hear no one. So those will be adopted. Updates on COVID-19?
Oh, I get to have all of the fun. Um, so we have it as, as you know, and if you're watching the map of Connecticut, we are watching the, the steady spread of COVID happening around us. I think that we are learning so much about the virus itself, and we constantly adjust our plans and take a look at our phasing and what we're doing. To date, meaning looking at from our August 31st start date of school, we have had four staff members who have tested positive for COVID. And we've had three students who have tested positive for COVID. We have had no connections that have come from within the school. We have had some that we've considered presumed positive. We have quarantined to the edges because we want to make certain if there's even chances of contact, that we have removed that element of spread from the schools. To talk about what happened with our sixth grade, it was one in which there was a delayed result of COVID. And at that point, just making certain, we knew that, that entire grade level had been zoned off. Kim Gallo, Mike Kraft have done a wonderful job making certain that the cohort of students that exists, that we know that they remain in those areas. So we didn't have to close down all of Chappauk. And again, it's one that is a credit to how things have been zoned. And also to know that everything that we do is, is very predicted. And it feels almost methodical with how the routines are in place. We've learned a lot of things through each drill, even to the point that now within Power Schools, we have all of the class seating charts that are lifted. So that way at the touch of the button, we can print out who's sitting next to who and create those zones where we're looking at it. And even though we're very fortunate that we have six feet of distance between our seats, there are certain times that we look at, but how much time they were present within that area when we're making our decisions. So it's not an exact science, and we probably err more on the side of caution because it is one in which we want to know that we are presenting a safe school. But I do want to say that as of today, what becomes important is, is putting things in perspective. Is right now, we have three people in the Chappauk community who are positive for COVID. Three out of the 540 people at Chappauk. And so I know when we're looking at what does the infection rate look like, and you know, you hear these numbers of what positivity. I think the other part that happened when we walked in to school in September, there was the assumption that the schools were going to be the super spreaders. That once it got in, then it would just go through like hotcakes and, and go through an entire cohort of students. And we're not finding that's the case right now. We are actually finding that one of the safest places for the students is within the school setting. Because when you look at things that are happening beyond the school, some of these social opportunities that people are taking, that's where we're starting to see a lot of, when we're doing the contact tracing, where we see multiple COVID cases coming from. So I have to say thank you to our community who remains vigilant in curbing some of the social activities that may create spread in our communities. I know that it is tough because there are sacrifices and there are things that people aren't able to do. But I can tell you, it has kept our doors open since August 31st. And again, this wouldn't be possible if it wasn't for our communities. So that's my update as of today. If anybody has any questions about COVID, as you saw, I did send out an update and the three, the number I gave you did include the two students based on the letter that I sent out today.
Greg, I have a question. Of the cases you've mentioned, how many are in the last two weeks?
Within the last two weeks, three students.
Three students. So all the staff have gone through their quarantines and they're theoretically not, no longer endangered.
It's, things are happening in cycles. So we didn't have four staff members who are out with COVID altogether. We, we, they each had it and then they were quarantined accordingly. And when it was safe for them to return to school, they did such. But yeah, no, right now, we, you know.
It's just three students.
It is. And I will tell you, it's, it's harder. We are quarantining people when, when there's a potential contact. And Kim will tell you the walking nightmare right now is her and I wake up at 5:15 each morning and have the like, okay, what does it look like for attendance? Can I run school? And it's really coming down to can I staff school more than anything. So that's where we are looking for. People come in, we need subs, we want to make safe choices with our subs. So people within our communities would have preference to subbing positions, but it is one that I, I can tell you that there are nail biters happening, especially when we quarantine the entire sixth grade team. Because they don't just teach sixth grade, they have seventh and eighth grade classes, and we still have to have a human being in front of them, even though they're teaching remotely to the sixth grade.
Thank you.
Mary, you have a question? Yeah, Mary.
I have another question. Megan, I had heard that New Milford was going to do a distance learning for a week after Thanksgiving to try to head off into the past. Anything might, that might happen due to Thanksgiving. Have you given any thought to anything like that?
In conversation with the acting superintendent in New Milford, their concern was more of staffing concern. So with anybody who was traveling, we are requiring that people do follow the travel advisory, which means that if they travel out of state and are in a hot state, they need to have a PCR test, and the results can take up to 72 hours to, to show if it's a negative. If they do not get the PCR test, it is two weeks quarantine. So we do know that if people are traveling, it's going to impact our ability to hold school. I'm not looking to proactively do anything because as I said, we also know that some of the safest places are in school, but I'm not going to say that there may not be a reason we have to close schools.
Okay, I just, I had just wondered if, you know, they had done that as a preemptive strike against anything that may have had happened as a result of Thanksgiving dinners with.
No, um, because then they would have closed for two weeks if it was after that. So yeah, so it, it really comes down to staffing and travel. From, that's again, per conversation. And I did send to the board, I was working with regional superintendents, and we all sent a collective letter out to the community saying that, you know, we want people making safe choices over the holidays and Thanksgiving tables are getting smaller in order for people to be safe. And it needs to happen because that is the only way we're going to kind of mitigate some of the spread that we're seeing.
I understand turkey kills the virus.
Oh, is that it? Victor Pan?
That's exactly right.
Megan, I have a question. Um, Megan, so
Oh boy, we're losing you.
realizes about the traveling Thanksgiving, quarantining, and I'm assuming that that's based on, okay. Okay. Never mind.
No, I, I'm going to assume, if I can go, I'm hearing you say that does our staff know that they would have to quarantine?
Yes, and is it done by the honor system, which I guess is really the only way to do that, and they realize the importance of, of that?
I, I, I hope they realize the importance. I think you, you all know that I do send out every time it's a long weekend, I send out, here's the travel advisory, and we send that each and every time. I sent out an email today to our staff to let them know and to start by saying, thank you for not traveling. Thank you for having smaller gatherings. Thank you for wearing your face masks. I don't, you know, I don't want to be so presumptuous to, to say you can't do this and you can't do that, but I'm going to say the sacrifices that people are making are helping us stay open. And I did notify the staff today of that very message.
Okay, thank you. Greg, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
Um, I guess, so I obviously were assuming that, Megan, that we're still checking students' temperatures when they come in every day. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So can you just talk a little bit about the, the daily ritual for teachers as well?
The daily ritual of meeting.
Every day, the students are getting their temperature checked. Are we, are we expecting the same from the staff?
We've asked the staff to self-report and to check. We do leave the thermometers right at the door for them to do that self-check. I can tell you, our staff has been very good about their sensitivity, that if something feels off, and our message has been, if you don't feel good, stay home. Not feeling good does not mean COVID. It means you don't feel good. But I can tell you, we've had a lot of staff members who have gone and taken the test to just make certain, you know, they have a head cold, they're just going to take a test just to make certain, you know, that we have had more people. And again, I cannot thank people enough for disclosing things that they don't have to. You know, staff members who've said like, look, I've always had allergies, but you don't have to tell me you've always had allergies, but thank you, that helps me. So that way, if you're sniffling around me, I, I'm not getting nervous. And those, those kind of full disclosures, we've also had that staff members who said, tell everybody on staff, I'm out, I'm quarantined, but I've been tested and I'm negative. And they've actually said, I don't care about HIPAA, just let everybody know. So. But when you ask about what is their routine, we ask them to, you know, we have all of the equipment right there. We ask them to test themselves, that same precaution that exists. We do give them reminders because sometimes I think we slip and get comfortable, you know, that the masks are up and when they walk into each other's classrooms, you know, making certain that that happens. Because I think we saw for a little while, it was, it was slipping down below the nose. It was slipping a little bit. And I will tell you, I think, and Kim, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm seeing more people, it is up. Emily, do you see more people are right back up? And some of those reminders, because we, we recognize the importance. It has changed behaviors.
Megan, I have one more question. Regarding insurance, is our insurance making sure, are we, are we making sure that our insurance covers multiple tests if the teachers need it or the staff needs it?
Um, I don't, we don't have the ability to, to dictate what kind of, what our insurance will cover and what it won't cover. But I do know that it does cover COVID tests. I don't know about multiple. I, I can't speak to that myself.
Because that, that's something we might want to check on, just so that the teachers know that they can do it and it'll be paid for.
I can tell you, not one teacher has told me about a copayment that they've had to make. So, and I, I know, I, I know for certain, I've had some who've gotten tested four times.
Okay, good. So that should be fine.
I'm sorry.
Um, this is unrelated, but I don't, and I don't know what can be done. A couple of members of the public have called me and they can't log on to the Zoom meeting tonight for some reason.
Oh, um, can you do me a favor? If you want to put their names or email addresses in the chat box, I can send them a direct invite, or actually Ben, if you can send them a direct invite. So if they can send you their email, we can invite them right in because I want to make certain that this is accessible to all.
John, do you know if any of them wanted to address items on the agenda?
I don't believe so. I can tell you.
If they do, I'm perfectly happy to reopen that at some point to give them that opportunity if they did want to address us.
Okay, I'm not sure.
Okay.
John, you can forward your email on to them. If you, John, if you forwarded your email to them, the, the one you got like at 6:30, they would be able to sign in with that.
Yeah, that worked very well.
I'll do that then.
Okay, um, I don't know. I hear the bell ringing. I don't know what that's supposed to mean.
Number one.
Usually bells mean something. All right, I, I, okay, anyone else have questions on COVID-19? Okay, hearing nothing. We'll move on. Megan, before, before we go on to the reports, do we want to act on this calendar issue?
I think knowing that some people's internet may be may be very fragile right now, I, I would appreciate if it's okay with the board, if we can move that agenda item up quickly.
All right, let, why don't we move that agenda, unless anyone objects, why don't we move that agenda item up to right now, and let's try to take care of it. Megan, what's different? What's the primary difference? Can you remind us?
Um, sure. Taking a look at the, the dates that we have. So next year's April vacation, it was really one of the tougher decisions. The reason that we're having the challenge is not everybody's following the regional calendar. So some people are taking the week of April 18th as their April vacation, so they can get that Good Friday and then carry it into the next week. While the regional calendar has it being the week of the 11th and absorbing Good Friday into that April vacation. So we went through and we called our sending districts for our agri-science program as well as taking a look, and we did stick with what the regional calendar had recommended, which is that we would do the week of the 11th. Our first day of school would be August 31st. That's actually going to start us on a Tuesday. So we would have Thursday, Friday for our PD days and give everybody a long weekend before we started our school year. Other things that you may notice, just some of the traditional, you'll see that we've kept the traditional professional development days that we've always had with our last day of school being on June 14th with the two half-days the last day.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve this as this 2021-22 school calendar?
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jen?
Yep.
Ken? Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mike. All right, further discussion? All those in favor, Sue, why don't you, well, let's, let's see if anyone, if anyone votes no. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Chairman votes aye, it's unanimous. Okay.
Thank you.
I'll go home now. Everything else is.
That's all I needed. Just so you all know, though, if we're dealing with COVID again next year, that vote may have been in vain a little bit, but, um, right now, we're, we're hoping for the best.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to, to reports. I'll start with the board chairs report, and I'm, you know, most nights I don't say very much. And I'm going to take some of that time back tonight, and I'm going to speak for a few minutes because there's some, there's some things I'd like to address, and I think it's appropriate at this time. Well, here we are back in virtual meetings. Those of you who've been up to Chappauk have seen that we made great progress and expect to have most of the punch list items completed by Thanksgiving, and believe me, for me, that's going to be Thanksgiving. We're nearing a solution for the boards that popped off the walls of the riding ring, and now I see that light at the end of the tunnel is looking less like a train. So I think we're, we're, we're getting there. Now, speaking of things that seem to go on forever, I was asked to make some remarks tonight about the presidential election and the Thanksgiving holiday. And I intend to, but no way the election of 2020. I want to talk about the election of 1864. In those days before polling, no one even pretended to know what was going to happen. And with the Civil War having dragged on for four bloody years and a lot of disagreement and division in between the political parties, even in the North, President Abraham Lincoln was far from assured of reelection. And so on October 19th in 1864, he was distressed to have to respond to rumors that if he were beaten between the end of his, between then and the end of his term, he was going to do whatever he could to ruin the government. And there were others who were saying that the Democratic Party had adjourned its convention without adjourned and seen a die, meaning that it could be reopened. So if their candidate prevailed, he could seize immediate control of the government. And to this, Lincoln said, "I hope the good people will permit themselves to suffer no uneasiness on either point. I'm struggling to maintain the government, not to overthrow it. I therefore say that if I shall live, I shall remain president until the 4th of next March, and that whoever shall be constitutionally elected in November shall be duly installed as president on the 4th of March, and that in that interval, I shall do my utmost that whatever it is to hold, whoever it is to hold the helm for the next voyage shall start with the best possible chance to save the ship." This is due to the people, due to the people, both on principle and under the Constitution. Their will constitutionally expressed is the ultimate law for all. If they should deliberately resolve to have immediate peace even at the loss of their country and their liberty, I know not the power or the right to resist them. It is their own business, and they must do as they please with their own. I believe, however, they're still resolved to preserve their country and their liberty, and in this office, in office or out of it, I am resolved to stand by them. And if you think our present electoral experience is unprecedented, well, not so much. Alexis de Tocqueville wrote in Democracy America in 1835, I'll quote him, "A presidential election in the United States may be looked upon as a time of national crisis as the election draws near, intrigues, intensify, agitation increases and spreads. The citizens divide into several camps, each behind its candidate. A fever grips the entire nation. The election becomes the daily grist of public papers, the subject of private conversations, the aim of all activity, the object of all thought, and the sole interest of the moment." And that was in 1835. So after quelling those rumors that there might not be a peaceful transfer of power in 1864, the very next day, President Lincoln turned to Thanksgiving. And he issued, now, the first proclamation for Thanksgiving was issued by George Washington in 1789 at the beginning of the republic. But Jefferson didn't celebrate Thanksgiving, and so it was observed only sporadically. But on October 20, 1864, the very day after having to quell those rumors about the election, the president said it's, the president started his proclamation by noting, "It has pleased the almighty God to prolong our national life another year, defending us with his guardian care against unfriendly designs from abroad and vouchsafing to us in his mercy many signal victories over the enemy who is of our own household." He then waxed on about the health Americans enjoyed, the armed forces enjoyed, the fact that our population was augmented by emancipation and immigration, that our free population, that new sources of wealth have been opened and crowning the labor of our working men in every industry with abundant rewards. And he finally acknowledged the greatest gift we received, the animating of our minds and hearts with fortitude, courage, and resolution sufficient for the great trial of civil war and the reasonable hopes of an ultimate and happy deliverance from our dangers and afflictions. So then he proclaimed the last Thursday of November, "A day which he desired to be observed by all fellow citizens as a day of Thanksgiving and praise to the almighty God and beneficent Creator and ruler of the universe, and I do further recommend to my fellow citizens that on that occasion, they do reverently humble themselves in the dust and from thence offer to the great disposal of events for a return of the inestimable blessings of peace, union, and harmony throughout the land. And to that, I say, hear, hear." And so Thanksgiving was celebrated every year thereafter. And when you gather with your families to celebrate Thanksgiving in 10 days' time, I wish you health and commend to you reserve as COVID-19 is rampant and afoot in our land. Think twice about every plan you make, and remember, although the holidays this year will be somewhat hollow compared to the convention, that you're giving thanks not just for the gifts you've received in the last year, but for the people you love, their safety and health, which is in your hands. Think of the sacrifices. If you need an example, think of the sacrifices made by our staff this year for the benefit of your children. Well, one of the other things Lincoln said in that quelling rumor speech is he said, "I may add that in this purpose to save the country and its liberties, no classes of people seem so nearly unanimous as the soldiers in the field and the seamen afloat. Do they not have at the hardest of all, who should quell?" Who should quail while they do not? God bless the soldiers and seamen and all their brave commanders." Well, in 2020, we give thanks for the brave staff of Region 12 soldiering on in the classrooms and throughout our schools with all their brave commander, brave commanders, madam superintendent. I know I've gone on at length, but as Lincoln said quoting a preacher, "I could give shorter sermons, but once I start, I get too lazy to stop. Thank you for your patience and happy Thanksgiving." Now we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Greg, and I, I don't think I can ever be as eloquent. And I do have to echo thank you and recognizing how much people have been soldiering on during this time and I, I think there, I lose words of how to say thank you. But we know that as we go into this season, they, our gratitude is vast. So to do some reports that we have, I wanted to bring the attention to the board. Within our board packet, I did include an updated enrollment list. We continue to have movement in our numbers. So it was brought to our attention, we had some residency changes and things that happened without notification to the schools. So we were chasing down addresses. We were trying to get proof of residency. We also had some of our new enrollments that were coming to us from New York who started with us and then disappeared. So we needed to make certain that we contacted the New York schools, which created some fluctuations and you're going to see that in our enrollment numbers. Additionally, we are still seeing shifts between our distance learners and our in-person learners. We were seeing a huge influx of our distance learners become in-person learners and then as we've seen some upticks as well as putting out our sixth grade and quarantine, we now have a higher distance learning population. So I did want to make certain that people knew to, when you're comparing our enrollment documents that you got last year and this year, if you have any questions, do not hesitate to contact myself or Nicole. It has been really hard this year to make certain that we've accounted for everyone and where they, they belong within each program. I also want to take this opportunity, in my last conversation with the board, we talked about distance learners and about the additional stress that's happening to our staff. And I want to start by apologizing because I don't want anyone for two seconds to think that our distance learners are burden. We recognize the amount of effort that it takes for our learners who are accessing us remotely to meet us halfway. And even though we're feeling the stress of doing something different, I think that as we are learning to navigate these virtual classrooms and in-person environments, we're falling into hiccups and I think the stress we feel is because we want it perfect for our kids. And we don't have perfect. And we have moments of embarrassment because we can't get technology to work for us. We have moments of hardship because we want to just make it better each time. And so I, I had a wonderful conversation with one of our distance learning family members after the meeting and she talked about the fact that my words made it feel like there was a burden that distance learners were causing on the district versus feeling like they're actually doing this too and reducing the amount of students that are in school and allowing us for some of that space. So I just wanted to make certain that I recognize and appreciate everything that everyone is doing during this time. But also recognizing that our teachers aren't mad at our distance learners, they're not the cause of stress, but it is a cause of new learning. And that's what I want to make certain I express tonight. And with distance and talking about things that we have and I shared about our COVID updates, we do have substitute shortages. Right now, and Kim Gallo will tell you and Emily Judd will share the same, that it is all hands on deck. We have had counselors, Mike Boucher, I think, had to cover, you know, an AP calculus class once or twice. We're not going to do great things because of that, teasing Mike. But it is to say that we have everybody pitching in and rolling up their sleeves because we have a shortage of subs. So last week, there were certain times, certain times of the day where we had 15 people out in one school and scrambling to make that work. The teachers that are not just teaching that one grade level, we need to make certain there's somebody physically present while somebody's teaching remotely and we're projecting it on the smart board to the students so we can keep education going. That said, Emily Judd is feeling the, the pressure of when we're quarantining a grade level, some of the families are teachers at her school and now because they have to stay home with their children, we now have an attendance that we need to now compensate for at our other schools. So it's one where you have to know it, it's not easy decisions when we're putting in quarantining people. Again, we will do everything to make certain that safety is at the forefront of all of our decisions. But it is one in which you have to know there are some days it is a body who is helping us get through the day. It is somebody who's making certain that the children are cared for. But it is not optimal education every day, even though we are working extremely hard to make that happen. So I am so grateful to all of our staff members who have pitched in, who have said, "I've got a free period, I can cover." Really, they are making these turbulent times work and we are so appreciative. So as we go into our Thanksgiving week, I can tell you, I had a conversation with Pete Tagley who said, you know, you gotta do something, you gotta do something. These staff members are working so extra hard. And so we are going to make certain that there is a special treat for each one of our staff members as we go into the Thanksgiving break because we want them to know how thankful we are for them. So it's not extravagant, but it really is a way that we need people to know we care for them and we thank them for caring for us too. So as far as the updates, are there any questions? Because I really am excited to talk about our new personnel. I don't see any. So with that, I would like to introduce, we have two appointments tonight. I would like to introduce Carrie Share. She will be joining us as the Guidance Secretary at Chapag Valley School effective November 30th. Carrie comes to us, she had been working in Danbury and brings her talents of organization. If you have not seen, that woman got us together for graduation photos. She made certain things were moving ahead. A woman who takes initiative, who is thorough. We are very excited that she is going to make certain that our students at Chapag are organized, cared for and supported. And I don't think you're going to meet anybody who can sell Chapag like Carrie does. And I know that she is here today. So Carrie, if you want to say hi to everybody, they can see you on screen, please.
Hi, everyone. Very excited to join Region 12.
Yeah, Mom!
Thank you. Very truly excited.
We're excited to have you and, and it's subtle. I like when it's subtle. Great things are going to happen. So thank you for joining us.
Interrupt. Hi, Lily. Where are you?
Hey, Mr. Boucher.
How are you? How's everything going?
Good. How are you?
We're proud of you.
Thanks, Mr. Boucher.
All right, our next person that we get to introduce is Tracy Scarborough. And Tracy is also here with us tonight. I will have her say something in a moment, but Tracy is going to be working with us as the first grade teacher at Booth Free School. Currently, we have had a literacy interventionist who has covered the class at Booth Free for the first grade since the beginning of school. With Tracy coming in to join us, Tracy is going to allow one intervention to occur again at Booth Free, but also create stability within our classroom. Tracy is a graduate from St. Joseph's. She had gone on in student teaching at Thomiston and they liked her so much that they kept her on as a long-term sub. We're glad that she's now freed up and is able to stay with us for the remainder of the year. You should know about Tracy. She's a mother of two, a former PTO president and had worked as a paraprofessional. So we are very excited that she's joined us. So Tracy, if you don't mind just saying hello so people can put a face with the name.
Thank you very much, Megan. I'm so excited to be joining Region 12 schools. Hello, everybody.
Welcome aboard.
Welcome aboard and thank you. So we, we are excited. We have good energy coming in and I, I thank everyone for joining us during these turbulent times because we got to rate the ship and I think we're getting to the point where we are getting closer to being fully staffed, which is very exciting for all of us. We do have two resignations that I need to announce tonight. Elizabeth Delrada, the elementary teacher at Washington Primary School, has tendered to resignation as well as Elise Sadler, the tutor at Chapag Valley School effective November 13. So with that, that concludes my staffing updates. Questions or concerns?
Okay. John?
Question, Megan, about, I don't know if you were going to, who was, if anybody was going to talk about the, the open house that you had for the agri-science program and that we had to go online. What happened was that happened to be the day that my husband and I decided to take a walk around campus. Truth be told, I wanted to see if I could see the horses. And I just happened to come across a lady and two children who were walking around the campus also, who had actually been on that Zoom in the morning and thought it was very well done. And they wanted to come and see the campus for themselves and Greg had talked about and you had talked about how important it was for the campus to look good. They said, "This campus is spectacular." And they, and she, the mother said, "That says a lot to her about how much we care about the, the students and it, it shows in, in that." So I wanted to pass that on to, to both of you because I know how important that was to Greg and to you, Megan. So there we are. And I did get a glimpse of, glimpse of horses.
I'm glad to see that. And, and I do have to, you're absolutely right. I, I did fail to share. Thank you to Kim and the entire Chapag team because we went from planning to have something in person in small groups, but recognizing with the current state of spread that we switched over to virtual, but they had people stationed in the different areas. They were able to walk people around the facilities virtually. And I, I think what you'll hear and what I've heard, the feedback is excitement for our program. So I, I'm glad that they're seeing the care and I mean, you all fought so hard, hard to make this program happen. And so to see that people really investing, not just their time, but their children's care with us, I think speaks volumes.
This, the mom did say that the virtual tour was fa, was fabulous. She said that it was so well done. She, it was hard to believe that it was just virtual. So kudos.
Well, those are great comments, Mary. Thank you for bringing those back. You know, look, we, we are really fortunate. So proud to be with the school system. We have these wonderful elementary schools. And each school really takes the kids in and prepares them for, for, you know, the, the great things in their lives to come. And there, there are places where the kids feel secure and they feel, they feel well cared for and well looked after and we know they're well taught. And, and then now we've got a program, I think increasingly every year gets better and better for them to get to the next stage of their, of their educational development in our middle high school. And, and that's not where it ends. They, they go on to great experiences after that and we hope great lives. And I think that's a testament to the, to the superintendent, her staff and our teachers, our parents and everyone else on our staff that works for the region. So good to hear.
Thank you for saying that, Mary.
Okay, John, do you have a treasurer's report?
I do. Um, I'd like to preface my treasurer's report by, by saying I'm glad that Andrew Hoskins is still viewing. And I want to share with you something that happened in 1955. I have a twin sister. And we, when my mother enrolled us in the kindergarten there, public, public school kindergarten, they tried to separate us. And after two days of fuss and commotion and a whole bunch of hysteria, things did not go well for the Norwalk Public School System. So they had to reunite us. So I'm going to circle back to reach. I didn't realize until you said tonight that there was a lottery. And it behooves the school board to ensure that we can provide preschool education for all of the Region 12 children. And, um, you know, COVID aside, there are no nursery schools out there anymore for people to attend. Perhaps Montessori, but we kind of put them out of business. So the public school system should feel obligated to provide reach for each and every student who wants to attend. So, and today I had the opportunity to view the building committee meeting and for my report tonight, and I'm going to give you some of the financials surrounding the ag science and science lab renovations and construction. I would also urge the board to go to the building committee, the meeting packet. Sue Haberly has a whole litany of documents and payments, subcontractor re-trainage, ONG completion documents. It's just, it, it's very informative. A few years ago, I hope that those building committee meetings could be recorded. They are not, but I would urge, you know, I don't think there's very many left, but I would urge all of you to to, if you have the opportunity to view a building committee meeting, and I want to commend all of its members, Alex and Greg and, and I know Julie was on it for a while, Tony Bedini, John Cook, I know Rob Horrigan was on the building committee along with our staff, Kim, Jay Hubbell Bank, excuse me, Kim, Megan, Nicole, Sue. Hope, I hope I'm not forgetting anyone, but if I am, they do a tremendous job in watch, being the watchdogs for all of the construction, all of the incidentals, all of the complexities and especially the financials and, and making sure that the contractors do a good job for us and keep it within the budget. But I'll, I'll give you a brief overview of what's happening. The two projects combined, Science Labs and Ag totaled out to $34,377,411. ONG's guaranteed maximum price was $29,512,300. Onto that ONG's price, there are $728,077 in change orders. This totals out to be just over $30,240,000. With the possibility of a few more change orders being added on. There were 3.6 million in soft costs. That's architectural design, consultants fees, commissioning agents, testing. And unfortunately, $250,000 for building permit fees. Our owner's contingency has been exhausted, but there still remains in the ONG contingency about $380,000. So we're, we are definitely under budget, which is truly commendable for, for the size and scope of the project. At present, we have 8,250,000 long-term bonded debt. That's a 21-year bond. That's a 21-year bonding for the eight and a quarter million. In addition to that, the state holds back 11% of the total of the project, the DAS, until all of our ducks are in a row, all of the compliances are met. And it usually takes a couple of years before all the dust settles and the state fulfills their grant obligations 100%. So we have a $4 million on top of that. It's an annual renewal. And the interest on all this, the interest in principle on all this for this year is pretty steep. But the bond payment for 2020, 2021, $325,000. And 416,000 is bond interest. So that's for this year alone, our payment, our repayment on that bond is $741,000. Again, as soon as that short-term $4 million is, is paid back, our annual commitment should be greatly reduced. A more positive note. I reviewed the, the payouts to all the vendors and the billing today too, at the central office. And one thing I noted was our oil costs. We're paying $2.05 a gallon, which is a very good rate. I believe we're in a consortium and Nicole is to be commended for assuring that low price on, on oil for Burnham and Booth and Washington Primer. And that's about it. Any questions?
Thank you, John. Okay, we'll go on to committee reports. First one being CAPE. Mary, do you have anything to report to us?
There's not much going on. There are December webinars that they have. That, one of them is called "The Board's Role in the Budget Process", and that's on December 2nd. And then there's another one, "The Board's Role in Advocacy", and that's on December 7th. And that's about it.
All right, if anyone wants to go to any of these CAPE seminars, feel free to contact the central office and talk to Debbie and we'll, we'll get you signed up.
Actually, you can sign up directly. I signed up for the December 2nd one.
Okay, well, if you can sign up for these directly, that works too. So in any event, that's good. You're, you're welcome to go to those. Okay, curriculum and educational programming, Mike?
Sure, thanks, Greg. We just had met actually this evening. And the primary focus was to talk a little bit about how the Freshman Academy Plan, which we talked about earlier in the, the school year, that's kind of understandably on hold until next school year, 2021, '22. Definitely still believe in the concept, see the need for it. But the, the focus really, the kind of all encompassing focus is, is dealing with the ramifications of education in the time of COVID, especially difficult, I think, for transitioning students like freshmen. So that, that seems to be really where the focus right now is, both in terms of looking at the data, looking at how students are doing, getting feedback and implementing, you know, changes for contingency plans if we do have to go full remote. Hopefully, we won't have to use that option, but that was part of what we talked about as well.
Mike, thank you. Any questions? All right, we'll go on to finance and operations, Alex.
Yeah, the FNO committee has not met since our last board meeting. So I really don't have anything to report.
Okay. Labor negotiations, Jim?
Yes, still nothing, no negotiations pending at this time.
Okay. Julie, best strategic long-range planning?
Julie, you're on mute.
That was dumb, sorry about that. So we did have a meeting. I wasn't there, but the team carried on and we are making some progress. And I have a few updates. On the marketing side, we are still working with Sander Max. However, we've run into a glitch with the logo development. They want to charge us more money and Megan is appropriately pushing back on that. So Megan, do you have an update as to where that stands?
Um, at, at this point, we're potentially taking another avenue.
Yeah.
We will continue and they're making certain that with the brochure. And once we finalize whatever our logo choice is, it will be inserted.
Okay.
On the long-range planning goals, we have made some progress, but we're looking into the idea of getting some, a small amount of help from some outside consultants. We're looking at the Center for Change, CAPE or Ed Advance. And that's really to make sure that each board member who's working on their goals, that there's some consistency, that we're not doing this in silos, that our measures and our drill downs and our action steps are consistent. So we thought we could use a little help from an outside consultant who's done this with other school districts. So that's our next step with the long-range goals. And I haven't heard any feedback as if any of the ambassadors have been contacted by new families. So if anybody has been contacted and want to share what that was like, I'd appreciate knowing about that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Julie. We'll move on now to new business and updates. The first item is state of diversity.
Um, and I had shared with the board, there, there's actions that we are taking right now within our school systems in order to make certain that we are regularly addressing issues with equity, equality, and things that are happening within society. So, you know, we make certain that things are done as it is developmentally appropriate. So whereas I had asked our, our administrative team for what are some of the actions that they're doing in order to increase diversity tolerance and inclusion? And it amazed me how much our administrators really thought about how do you infuse it so that way it wasn't hitting kids over the head with, you know, understanding different religions and acceptance and tolerance, but rather how we utilize holidays around the world as a way that we are creating acceptance and understanding and providing opportunities to ask questions about one another. But we also recognize our, our population tends to be pretty homogeneous. We don't see a lot of diversity. And so what are some of the ways that we are making certain that we are bringing up and celebrating some of those differences? We don't want to be, we, we don't want to bury our head in the sand and pretend that we are in a bubble and we are not impacted by society and what's happening around us. And I think Greg started us with this wonderful perspective that this point in time is not unique. And some of the struggles that we're seeing are not unique. And so what becomes important is how do we create these learning opportunities? You know, we have heard some of our students say things that, that go to show that it's intolerance that, that may be happening. And how do we address this? And how do we do it in a way that's not marginalizing any group but creating an opportunity to really talk, to ask questions, to learn from one another? And so different projects that are happening, whether there's some talks about engaging with the American Civil Liberties Union, also having conversations with our students about different projects that are happening around us, even things that it's not just about skin color. It's also about abilities and working with Wounded Warrior Projects and talking about how is this accessible? And what does the world look like when, when the world is not designed for you? And so we constantly bring that in, but doing it with subtleties. So that way it's embedded in daily conversations, allowing for debates to happen. And believe you and me, there have been some pretty lively debates that have been happening in our classrooms. But doing it in a way that it is safe for people to express what they're thinking and to really explore what does their thinking mean and how their experiences have crafted, what is their belief system? So we will be talking about this a lot at upcoming board meetings. I don't want this to go quietly. So sharing what are some of our efforts will be coming up. So that way we can showcase how Chapag is really including all members, all races, all genders, all, all sexual preferences for us, inclusion, and making people feel welcome, especially as we have so much change that is happening in our schools themselves as we welcome new community members to us. We want to make certain that we are projecting an image that is about unity. And we will continue to do so.
Okay, thank you. The next item, distance learning for school and school closures?
Okay. And if it's okay with the board, I would like to at this time to share my screen because I want to show everyone, we have been working as an administrative team to talk about what does it look like if we have to shift back into distance learning? And I'm going to tell everyone, we spent a lot of time last spring surveying everyone about everything. And it's different, the school day is different when you're designing it for a remote access for the entire school. So if we did indeed go to a full remote learning day, what we learned was the marathon that we were running our students through was too much. So we had kids go through seven periods, 27 minutes each, one after the other. And we tried to cram it all into one part of the day. And you had Zoom burnout and you had kids who just, there was too much screen time. So in the remote learning schedule that has been developed at Chapag, it now allows for independent learning time in between periods. This will allow students to do some of the independent work that they have to do. So you'll see period one, which is already a shortened period. Then there'll be small group sessions in which teachers can support kids. Students can do independent work before coming into period three, which would be an 80-minute lesson, to then have the small group session again, where now you do labs and have that 40 minutes in between where you're going to catch up, do your independent work, lunch, fifth period, seventh period. So we, we walked through that for what it looks like for the high school. But additionally, and again, I'm going to apologize because I'm going to swap screens for one moment. So this way I'm not going to make anybody dizzy by scrolling back and forth. And I have to thank Emily Judd for her work on creating the image for us so that we can look at. But looking at even within the younger grade levels to make certain that there's time in which content is happening, reading, our foundations time. But also you'll notice seeing flex time happening within there, allowing some of that time where kids can get some of the intervention. It allows our teachers to have some flexibility on what they want to do. So again, trying to make certain that we're looking at, how do we want to design the day so that way we are still covering all of the content while treating what feels like a controlled day that's not cramming everything in all at once? The difference with the elementary school is also creating a Wednesday, which would be an asynchronous day that would also allow our students to work with independent groups, to have more intervention time and to allow for some of that planning. So that's what our distance learning would look like if we do have to flip to that schedule. Again, we're trying to learn from the experience that we had. I think all of us found value in synchronous learning, but also recognizing all synchronous, all the time created burnout. And how do we have to do this to allow for additional planning? So are there any questions about the distance learning day? Because it's going to flow very nicely into our remote snow day.
Okay.
I don't see any. So if it's okay, Greg, I'll just kind of continue on my tirade.
Right into remote snow days.
Right into remote snow days. Um, so the state of Connecticut is allowing snow days to be remote learning days. And this is one of the positive things that came out of COVID is that knowing that all of our students would have access to technology and have access to learning, we don't have to have a lost day anymore. I think we all recognize that the longer you go out in June, we have a very small attention span at that time that we're working with. And we really want to make certain that we're optimizing learning opportunities. So the change to remote snow days would occur only if there was not a power disruption to our towns and students could access electronics. It really is for hazardous road conditions that are out there. Rather than making it a day off, we would just switch over. What we would do is, there's not a huge mystery on when there's a snow day coming up or a potential. And because the students don't have access to lockers, we send all the kids home with their devices. So that way we're preparing for an event we have to transition over to that remote snow day. We had a lot of conversation about what this day would actually look like, whether we wanted a different model, whether we kept the same schedule as a regular school day, if it's a remote snow day. And after some heated conversations, I think what we recognize is the importance for children to have a routine and consistency. Therefore, regardless of if it's a remote snow day or if it's a distance learning day, we are going to keep that schedule. So students know what to expect and what time to be on. And they don't have to differentiate between what type of remote learning they're going to. When we looked at the things that we have, the state is only requiring 177 days of school this year. We are currently at 180. So we already have the three days over what the state is expecting. And that does give us some wiggle room in the event that we really do have a long closure. It gives the board the option if they want to somehow forgive the three days. But for right now, utilizing the remote snow days, I believe, is something that this board has wanted to do for a long time. We've talked about how we, how would we do that? You know, snow days that are just electronics-based. And now we have the ability to do so with the state's permission.
Okay.
Could I just ask you a question? Would delays and early dismissals, those would still remain exactly as they have been in the past?
Absolutely correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I just have a question. It's, we're just discussing it for this current winter, correct?
Correct.
Just want to be sure.
No, you're, you're right. And I think it's a good pilot to see if something can be long-lasting. I don't know right now what the State of Connecticut Board of Education has said is for this year, it would allow the remote snow days.
I mean, I, just for the future in terms of thinking about this. I mean, I think it is a, it certainly is a great solution to not going into, you know, the first week in July when we have these winters. I do think that there is some, there's value in being able to allow there to, some wiggle room, like you were saying, and allowing, you know, the children to wake up and just be psyched that it's a snow day. I mean, I do think that those breaks are really important. It's not, it's not as much fun when it's the 15th day as it is maybe the first and the second. Because I, for parents and for staff and for, well, kids never. But so I just think that in the future, I think it's a great remedy. But I do think that there is value in allowing them to just have their hot chocolate and play in the snow. And yeah.
I'm going to tell you, and what you said has been echoed in some of the parent conversations that we've had, especially at the elementary level.
Yeah.
And I'm going to say, and I, I can- And I'm going to say, and I can tell you and Emily will echo this. Part of the conversation was we were in saying to the teachers, like, you know, there may be times where we say, okay, go out in the snow, I'll see you guys back here in about a half hour.
Yeah.
Because we don't want to, we don't want to rob the magic of childhood. We want to capitalize on an opportunity, but not do it blindly.
Yeah, agreed. Agreed, thanks.
Okay, any other questions? All right, I guess we're going on to the main event now.
Okay. So let me start by saying that as Mr. Haskins shared today and recognizing that my comments early on, reach is not my recommendation this year. I think that there are a lot of challenges that are coming up logistically. Of what we need to do in order to have space, in order to utilize staff. The additional expenses that are going to come up. So at this time, I just want to share with the board because we can't do the reach the way that we've been able to do it for years. But I do want to showcase the type of reach that we will be able to provide, what it will look like. So that way, everybody's walking in with their eyes wide open to the reach situation. So with that said, I'm going to I'm going to present it. All right, so we are redefining reach this year, but the cuteness still exists. Just six feet apart and without some of these activities that they've come to know and love. So the first thing that I need to say to you all is that I appreciate the fact that you are invested in creating educational opportunities. Really, you've seen education from ages three to 21. And I think that's how you make a comprehensive school system. Recognizing that early childhood education right now that we're looking at in our conversation is about non-mandated students during this year. So it will require some adjustments. We are going to have to reallocate, we'll redesign space. But it also is going to come with some reductions of services that we're going to be able to provide. So what reach typically and when we envisioned it and what it looks like. So before March 13th happened, it was play-based. There was collaborative learning. Cooperation and sharing was trust. We did so much where it was that hands-on learning, we wanted our kids to get their hands dirty. Now we don't want dirty hands. We included transportation in the past. There were two types of classes and we had the three Reach teachers. Now coming at what which will look like as we go into this year. We do have more independent learner stations. So kids are doing parallel play versus that collaborative learning. We have play-based, but again, it's individual learning. We do emphasize a lot of safety and personal space. There's a lot of bubbles that students need to be reminded of. So whether they're standing in hula hoops or whether it's because we have tape on the floor, making them aware of their space and the space of their friends. We are not able to provide transportation for our non-mandated students this year. Being able to open reach in January, the cost to adding buses for a midday run far exceeds our ability. As you can see, we have Mr. Wayness class, which is already in progress. That will remain the nine to two o'clock. But we will have Anne Westcott, who would do the nine fifteen to nine, nine fifteen to 11:30 class. And then the afternoon class, which would be 12:15 to 12:30. Right now, this is in draft form. We're still hashing out what the exact times are, but right now I wanted to give the perspective of what we're looking at logistically. And at this point, reach would have to be a Lotto. And I know in hearing John and hearing Mr. Hoskins talk about the lottery and what it impacts. We also have to recognize that there are capacity issues and there are state regulations that we have to make certain that we maintain. For every 10 students, we need to make certain that we have a paraprofessional. And recognizing what we're going to have to do for staffing and personnel. So we would be inviting 20 new Reach students to our program. This would bring our total Reach students to 30 students. Again, we have to also watch, we're going to have to give a little bit of wiggle room. And some of that, in the event we have something called Child Find. Where if a child is identified with having some developmental needs, we have to make space. So we have to leave some room in order to accommodate for students who may be coming in because of identification. Currently, we have approximately 30 students on our waitlist for Reach. We recognize that there are some priorities that we need to make certain are given. And the first one is students who need to be kindergarten ready. So priority will be given to those four-year-olds who are eligible to kindergarten in the fall. We also are going to give priorities to families who continue to hold their spot with a deposit from spring 2020. We want to make certain we're honoring that commitment. And at this time, based on the fact that we already have more people in the Lotto than we can enroll, we would not be accepting new applications at this time. So there are some changes. You know, as the sign says, it's some give and take. Currently, we've had Anne Westcott, who's been teaching kindergarten at WPS this year. She will be moved from the kindergarten classroom to the Reach program. We are going to have to hire a new paraprofessional that was currently not budgeted. And the reason it wasn't budgeted is we've utilized the staff thus far in order to make certain that the needs that have happened because of COVID and during the school year have been met. So it is additional staffing. We also have to hire a new first grade teacher or reduce the intervention support within WPS. We have put out a posting for the first grade teacher because that is the way that we would prefer to go. The other thing that's going to have to happen is currently our art room is used as an extra lunch space. We needed to create more space for students when they were eating. So the students will be shifted either into their classrooms or into the cafeteria. Because we will need to repurpose the art room into the kindergarten classroom. Currently, art has been, are unacarted. So it's not that it's displacing art, but it had, that space has been utilized and we will have to repurpose that. So to share with you what this does against the budget right now. So personnel costs in order to staff Reach for from January to the end of the year. You can see the numbers put on your screen. I'm not going to read them to you. But the other thing that I need to make certain that we recognize is that reach is not available during our distance learning options. What we were able to do in the spring was we were able to do some story times. We were able to have some times for learning. But it really wasn't a day program where we could get four-year-olds to sit down in front of the screen and interact and have that, that class. So if we do move to the distance learning model due to COVID-19, the costs are fixed. And so regardless of the program execution, if we hire someone on, we would absorb them into the staff. So that's what I wanted to share with you. We obviously are prepared to do the pivot and to work with those those adjustments, but I did want to let the board know that it's not the reach that we've been able to provide in the past. It's in abbreviated form. In order to not just provide it for 10 kids, but to make certain we could provide for more than that. That's why we went to a morning and afternoon opportunity, so that way we could have a longer reach to it, a reach for Reach, I apologize. To get a better catch base and for more students and have that opportunity. So with that said, this time I will invite any questions people have.
At our last meeting, you recommended against this and that failed by the vote of the board. This, I understand the talk that the man gave at the beginning of the meeting, Mr. Hoskins, I believe it was, and John. It is the, I believe it is the job of the board to provide early education and the Reach program is a wonderful program, but in today's environment, this, this year, is this what you've presented to us? Is this? Is this something that you recommend? If you had your way, your druthers, is this some that you feel should go forward? Is this something that you prefer?
No. And it kills me to say that because I think if anything, and I hope what the board has recognized is I believe in education through and through. And when you look at the goals that I put out for you all, my number one goal was health and safety. And I do feel like at this point, adding more students in taking up what is, and I don't want to trivialize it, but every square foot matters. When we're talking about how much to give to our students. I have concerns. I have concerns that we're going to have to try to do more with less. There is a finite amount of reserves that we have in resources. And I feel like we are putting additional tax on those resources. And I will tell you, yes. It is, it is hard and our children need to be kindergarten ready. I, I don't know how to give this trade-off. Certain things happen because of COVID. And us pushing forward because we want to have this learning opportunity. I just, I have concerns about the health factor. I have concerns about what we're doing for the children who right now are mandated and are not getting some of those additional supports that we need to offer.
All right, thank you. I'm sorry, Greg, can I ask a question?
Yes.
The vote, I believe, last time by which this is going forward was five, five, one. Can any person therefore make a motion with regard to this matter at this time?
Um, I don't see why not. I mean, under some systems, you need to be on the it's kind of, I think anybody can make the, make the motion because of the, because the vote was completely non-conclusive. The motion, the motion failed. So I don't know why, if you want to reconsider it, anyone couldn't make that motion.
Can I just ask a clarifying question too, Megan? As part of your presentation, you talked about the fact that if you move forward with this plan and the cost that would be incurred, all of that money would basically be for naught if during the month of January or February, if we were fully remote, correct?
That is, that is my implication in that, yes.
Basically would have wasted $68,000.
Well.
Just to also clarify, Megan, as far as what you're hearing as a superintendent, I mean, I'm certainly watching the news as I'm sure all of you are. Are you, are you hearing that that's a very distinct possibility?
We are being told that COVID should peak in mid-January.
This just seems to me as a no-brainer. I, I see, I really can't believe that we would be moving forward on wasting taxpayer dollars on, on a program. As much as we would love this program to be running, I think all of us support Reach. All of us are big fans of Reach. I don't think any of us should be fans of wasting taxpayer money.
Yeah. Megan, if we were to have to go to a remote, would that teacher that we've hired, the thirty, the sixty-some thousand, would that teacher be able to be moved over to some other area to do in distance learning?
We would, we would do push-in supports, but they would not have their own classroom.
No, but so it wouldn't be a total waste of the money, but portion of it.
It, it wouldn't be a necessity at that time. We would be certainly looking to how to utilize the talents. I believe during our last spring session, we utilized our Reach staff because they all have special education certification. We utilize them to support special education during shutdown. So we certainly allocate where we can and provide extra support with students who have differing needs. We would do the same with that, but it would not be, you know, I know right now we're adding this cost with the intent of having early childhood education and it would not amount to that.
Greg? Yeah. Jim?
Yeah, Michael, I just want to say that for me is really not about the money. If we had the space and we had, this could be done safely. And there were the students who wanted to go, I have no problem spending $61,000 to advance this program if we had the space and could do it safely. The superintendent is visibly stressed about this entire thing. It's unsafe. She doesn't know where this is going. She just doesn't feel it's right at this time. I don't know, but we hire a superintendent if we're not prepared to accept her recommendation. I'm going to make a motion that we stop the program as the superintendent suggested at our last meeting.
I will second that.
Motion made and seconded. All right, further discussion, please. John.
John, you're on you.
If the future were clear, if, I agree, you know, if in January, things are still looking ominous, we can always cancel the program in January. Why do we have to do it tonight? No one knows what the future is going to bring. And so even if we can't restart in January, perhaps February or March, at least give them three or four months of you know, pre-primary education. I don't agree with doing it tonight, canceling the program for the entire year. We're not wasting money if we're not opening until January anyway.
John, I, I have to just counter that because we don't just hire at the last one. We, we have to, we have to vet that the hiring process can take up to a month. So we would have to have everybody aligned. So I just, I want to know, I hear what you're saying. I don't, but I don't want to make it sound like it's, can get flipped that fast because there are things we need to purchase for a classroom to make this all happen. So there are logistics that need to be set up.
I'm just saying, we make decisions on a daily basis now with distance learning in that. And I just can't understand what happened prior to September. These people were in place for the, for the Reach. And then all of a sudden, they evaporated into becoming a first grader, kindergarten teacher. And the personnel, you know, seemed to disappear. Again, are we really listening to the public's wants and needs? I realize that, you know, there is a, there is a health threat. Although it hasn't been determined that little kids spread and, and are even susceptible to the virus. I don't want to see anyone, you know, get sick because of it, but I just don't understand why we can't delay making a permanent decision.
You know, I think we have to kind of go back to the original purpose of Reach. And Reach's primary purpose is for special needs students. These are federally mandated programs. That was our original focus for this particular program. The idea of providing other, you know, regular edge students pre-K and a pre-K education is a worthy idea, but we never intended it to be a universal pre-K to fill up, you know. you know, the, you know, space that we don't necessarily have. I mean, this is, this, this is not something that we can move on a dime. I mean, it requires a lot of consideration and careful planning. And, and the idea that in a, in a pandemic year, we should be expanding it dramatically seems to me kind of thoughtless. I, I, I really don't understand it. The idea that we, we could provide some benefit, and it's okay, spending all this money for just a month of or two months that students may get some benefit out of the program? I, I just don't see that either, and I don't know if parents would necessarily want to take advantage of a, a program that's only going to last for two months for their child. It, again, I, I think we need to reconsider this and go with the superintendent's recommendation.
Can I speak?
Yeah, oh yes, I'm sorry.
No, that's fine, totally fine. I, listen, I, this is a hard one for me, because my heartstrings just pull at the opportunity for the Reach students to come in, and so I, I voted to keep it. But it was an emotional decision. It wasn't really thinking through. And, you know, I really appreciated Mr. Hosings' input tonight, and it made me just, really just realize how important the Reach program is and how vital it is. But I, you know, I, I have to say, John, that the reality is, is that this is not an ideal year for Reach for kindergarten, for your senior year students. It's just not. And regardless of whether or not students or, or children may be susceptible to getting the, the virus, they certainly are susceptible to passing it on. And I think it's in our best judgment to keep our community as safe as possible and to make really smart decisions based with the information we have that's in front of us. I don't really, as much as I'd love to be able to wave a magic wand and think that this is going away in Ju, January, it's not. So the reality is, is as much as I agree with you that I would love to see Reach filled to the brim, I also think it's absolutely irresponsible to move forward with that kind of focus right here and now. So I, for one, will change my mind tonight, because I have to be as sad as I am about not seeing the Reach students come. I, I'm supporting you, Megan, on this decision, so.
Okay. Anyone else have anything they want to add here?
Well, I guess we're, but on a motion, it was made and seconded.
Greg?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, can I just say one thing? I mean, I just want to follow up what Jen said. There should be no mistake, at least by the public, from me, even, I'm the one who made the motion. I'm in full support of the Reach program. It's a wonderful program. And again, if we had the space and it was normal times, and the superintendent felt it could be done safely, I have no problem expanding it. $61,000 to treat those young students, I would have no problem with that. But under the circumstances that we face today, I, I just don't think it's a wise thing, and I think it's, I'm prepared to give the superintendent the benefit of the doubt. She's the one who has to deal with this. And it can, you can, it's greatly stressing her, and I just, I just don't think it's the right thing for the board to force upon her at this time. Thanks.
Okay.
Greg?
Yes.
I know I'm a member of the public, and it's not my time to speak. I tried to get in earlier because I totally agree with Jim Hirschfield and Jennifer Poten. So much has been put on Jen, on Megan Bennett, and she has done a superb job. So please, follow her lead. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, by the way, if any other member of the public who joined us late and missed the, the public introduction, and you wanted to address something on the agenda, and it happens to be this topic, I'm happy to have you speak now, and I'm sorry if you had trouble getting into our Zoom conference.
Thank you, Greg, I appreciate that.
No, 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 and I'm really, I'm really sorry, we couldn't get you in earlier. And thank you for your comments, okay. Um, does anyone else on the board have any further things they want to add to this? Okay, if that's, if that's the case.
Can I just say, I just wanted to say, I was on the board when we, years ago, when we first put Reach in place. And it is, it's a wonderful program, I know the people that started it, I know people that have worked there. And it, it breaks my heart that we have to, that we have to vote on doing this, even suspending it for a very short time. But we have to consider the health and welfare of our students and our staff, and that really has to come first. And little kids are little, little germ machines. And there, there will be the littlest of them all, and that, we have to consider that too. But it does, it breaks my heart that we have to, we have to even vote on this. But I will be voting to suspend the program.
All right. Any further comments? All right, we'll go to a vote. Sue, I'd like you to call the roll of, of the board members so that we can have each person vote without the.
Could I, could I please have the motion repeated?
The motion was to suspend the, the expansion of the Reach program.
Okay, thank you. Joe?
Yes.
Lisa, I believe she is off. John?
Hey.
Mike?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Alex?
abstaining.
Pete?
Yes.
Justin?
Yeah.
Mary?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Nine yes, one no, one abstention. Motion passed.
All right. At this point, the only thing left on the agenda is executive session to, to consider and discuss legal issues and action on executive session items. Is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss legal issues?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll let Sue award that to whoever she figured out went first. Okay, moved and seconded. All those in favor of going into executive session, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? All right, we will go into executive session.